This is a picture from the 416 fire and we are in an emergency response as a political subdivision of the state of Colorado, San Juan Basin Public Health performs local public health for La Plata and Archuleta counties. And we are currently in a declared emergency, much like communities in wildland fires and serving in the emergency response role. The first, there are kind of four components to how we contain or control communicable disease. They are surveillance, investigation, control and mitigation. So I'm just going to go through it in those steps. So surveillance is how we know what individuals have, are currently infectious, so that we can box in those individuals through case investigations and contact tracing, quarantine and isolation. But it also tells us what the burden of disease is in the community. And if the burden of disease is greater than you can box in, then you have to move to kind of generalized mitigation strategy below spread of infection. So with any communicable disease, it starts with surveillance. Depending on how much disease you have, you either control it by containing individual cases or you control it through broad mitigation strategies. So the cases, as they have been reported in the state of Colorado, this is a graph that shows you the change in cases week to week. So if we look at October, we can see that we had a 34% increase in cases, a 27% over the next week, and then a 23% over the week after that. So Colorado, this is a Colorado number, not a local number. Colorado is experiencing tremendous case growth. We believe that our RNa number is around 1.5, which means that we have uncontrolled spread across the state of Colorado. And in fact, we had a visit, an actual live in-person visit from Dr. Deborah Burks from the White House Task Force today to talk about Colorado's uncontrolled spread as demonstrated by these numbers. If we look at the most recent numbers where we compare to other states, this shows that Colorado is in a high incidence rate, where we are in what the White House has labeled the red zone, which is we have over 175 cases per 100,000 residents over seven days. Colorado chooses to report this as cases per 100,000 residents over 14 days. But it doesn't, it doesn't matter which way you're reporting it. This is a comparison number to see how we're doing compared to other states. So in this graph, we are showing that Colorado is in uncontrolled spread, yet we are lower than other cases, other states around the country. What you can see from this is that the, some of the highest incidents around the country are in the colder states of the Mountain West or the colder states of the Upper Midwest. And this is really evidence that as people are forced to move activities inside, it becomes much, much harder to contain COVID-19. And what we learned today from the White House Task Force is that Colorado is roughly four weeks behind North Dakota and South Dakota in the way that our cases are currently growing and the diffuse demographics that are experiencing high case rates. So we are watching this and trying to make adjustments very carefully, because if you see on this graph, North and South Dakota have the highest rates of anywhere in the country right now. The other thing that's important to look at from this graph is that Wyoming is also very close to the top. It's one of the top five states. This does put pressure on Colorado's hospital system. We have seen individuals from Wyoming seeking hospital care in the northern counties in Colorado. So that's in Laramo and in Weld. And we're starting to see that overflow into the metro hospitals. And we are seeing quite a few metro hospitals at capacity currently, even though overall the state of Colorado is still kind of in the middle and southwest Colorado is lagging behind the rest of the state. This is our projected hospitalization graph. And this graph describes the differences in small differences in transmission reduction measures can make very big differences in how many people land in the hospital. So I think, as we all know, the peak of hospital patients at one time in Colorado, back in April, when we didn't have enough tools to contain COVID-19, our peak was 888 cases in the hospital at one time in Colorado. We have since then been averaging about 200 individuals in the hospital at any given time. Over the last week, we've seen that rise to well over 600. It is on trajectory to be past peak, so past 900 Coloradans in the hospital in the next week to 10 days. And the difference is, is if we practice 67% transmission reduction versus 65% transmission reduction, you can see how this graph plays out in when we will reach, when we will overtake peak hospitalizations from April. So when we talk about what our success in something like face coverings or social distancing or staying at home, the way that we are kind of measuring that right now is in a aggregate transmission reduction number. It's a percentage number. And right now, we believe that Colorado is in that green line, which is a 65% transmission reduction number, which does not keep us from overwhelming healthcare in the next couple of weeks. So the ask to the community is to think about what your activities are differently and work as hard as we can to limit opportunities to spread COVID-19. Then moving into our local case data, we have surpassed 500 cases in San Juan Basin Public Health's jurisdiction. And as you can see, La Plata County is the purple line. Archuleta County is the blue line. Currently, La Plata County's cases are growing faster than Archuleta County's. We also track non-resident cases for both of our counties, because we also work to case investigate, contact trace, quarantine and isolate non-residents, because that can lead to spread in the community. So we track those numbers. They're not included in these graphs, because these graphs show what the burden is across residents of our community. This graph, I think, just demonstrates the changes in cases in the community. And as you'll see, all the way over on the right-hand side of it, there's a tremendous amount of activity, kind of consistent with the growth that we're seeing around the state. Again, our growth is lagging far behind the rest of the states, but we are very concerned that the diffuse growth that we are seeing here will look like the rest of the state in the next couple of weeks. This graph shows you cases by symptom onset. When there are delays in getting test results for a variety of reasons, the largest reason has been the increased volume of testing and increased demand for testing. It interferes with having timely results. So we also graph our cases by symptom onset date in addition to case report date, so that we can know the difference of when disease is spreading versus when we're able to investigate it. The two-week cumulative incidence, so we talked about this earlier. The White House Coronavirus Task Force uses a case incident rate per 100,000 residents over seven days. Colorado uses it over 14 days. So you can see from this graph that Archuleta County has been kind of hovering around 50 cases per 100,000 residents over 14 days for the last couple of weeks, whereas La Plata County has been steadily increasing since October, actually probably since the end of September, and is now up to, as of today, 164 cases per 100,000 residents over four. Our local transmission data, and unfortunately, the tools that we have to investigate cases in the state of Colorado were being redesigned as we speak. They were not, they were not designed well for this type of communicable disease and we're not able to capture all of the information that we needed over the last eight months. We do have new databases now. We are working hard. Our team is actually volunteering to be on the state work group to create opportunity in that tool to better track transmission data, because if we understand where cases are growing in our community, we can do a better job of targeted interventions. So with that, we have about 50% of our case investigations from September and October that have been able to get, give us detailed, analyzable transmission data. So with that, we have over 50% of cases we're working, we're volunteering outside the home. 40% of cases reported going to work while symptomatic. So this is a really, really important stat to linger on. This is something that we can do a whole lot better as a community around, which is really, really reminding people, we should not be going to work if we have symptoms. We should not be going to gatherings if we have symptoms. We should not be going to church, to organized events, that sort of thing. So we need to really get that message out. 26% of our cases report that they had attended community events or gatherings in the 14 days before they became symptomatic. We're not seeing a lot of our cases driven by travel, as evidenced by these stats. And then we are seeing over half of our cases knowing that they had had contact with someone confirmed or suspected of having COVID-19. The other thing that's not, didn't make this slide, but a full third of our cases don't have any idea where they caught it, which is an indication that you do have a widespread community spread. So it is important to have testing available in a community. There is a metric for the amount of testing that we should have in any community to effectively control disease. That's 150 tests per day per 100,000 residents. So we achieve that in both counties served by San Juan Basin Public Health through partnership with Animisurgical, Access Health, Mercy Regional Medical Center, Pagosa Springs Medical Center, Pagosa Medical Group and Archuleta Integrated Health. So we are, we do have information up here about how to access our free community testing. There's also testing at Cedar Diagnostics. We're increasing, right now, we're working on a plan to increase qualified partner testing. So for P through 12 education, for first responders, for critical government services, we are trying to set up a additional testing site. There'll be some more to come on that, if we can get all of the pieces to fall into place, so that we can ensure that, you know, critical services are available in the community if we continue to see case growth that is predicted for Colorado. So we're working on that. And then we just learned today that there may become additional testing resources available to the state of Colorado, because we have been deemed a high-growth state by the White House Coronavirus Task Force. So if that becomes available, we will integrate that into the planning that we are currently doing to make more testing available to our government and school partners. So that's the surveillance piece. Disease investigation is, this is how we box in disease. So we, you know, contact tracing is how we learn what the RNa is, who someone could have passed disease on to. So this is just a description of what our case investigators do. They, you know, learn from a case, who they had contact with. We recommend testing for anyone that they had contact with. We isolate people who are sick or test positive, and we quarantine people who have had, who've been exposed to COVID-19. This is a description of how it works. I won't go into all of the details on this, but the most important thing here is answer the call. So nothing that public health does in response is something we can do alone. So while we say that we are similar to firefighters in an emergency, putting water on the fire or building a fire line, the difference is that the work that we do in the community all relies on the community doing the work with us. We cannot investigate cases if people do not show up for tests. And then we can investigate cases if people aren't willing to communicate with us about their activities, so that we can continue to contain disease. And then this is just the graph, I think, that we're all familiar with, which is how we box in disease. I should say infection. Isolation is for individuals who are currently testing positive, who are currently infected. Right now in Colorado, we believe that one in 200 Coloradans is currently infectious with COVID-19. So any activities that we were getting away with over the last couple of months, where we relax about our transmission precautions, are going to be less successful now if one in 200 of us are currently infected. Quarantine is what we do with individuals who have potentially been exposed. It's how we ask those individuals to also help not spread disease by participating in a 14-day quarantine. Our staff can help anyone that has challenges successfully quarantine and isolate and getting the resources that they need. We have a whole system, whether it's food or housing or, you know, access to resources to pay bills by, through loss of work. We can help with all of that. It's important that we successfully quarantine and isolate to keep disease from spreading in the community. And then mitigation are the longer strategies. These are the general strategies that we ask the community to engage in, so that we don't overwhelm our healthcare system and that we are able to have enough public health resources to investigate and control infection as it's spreading in the community. So what we're finding is many communities in Colorado have moved into higher levels of restrictions. And as they've moved into higher levels of restrictions, they've had to triage their case investigations. They're doing about 50% of their case investigations. We're still doing 100%, because we believe that if we can box in cases as we find them, we will be able to keep schools open, businesses open, getting a paycheck. But mitigation is part of how we do this. And so these are the strategies that we talk about all the time, which is, you know, and we're really asking for the community to help on this. If you can work from home, please do work from home. If you are symptomatic, please do not go out. Practice our social distancing and our physical distancing. Comply with the mask order. It is still in effect. It is a very effective strategy. Hand hygiene, getting tested if you have symptoms. Limiting our social gatherings. And then the additional thing in the toolbox is the exposure notification, which is an Apple, Google platform available to all Coloradans for free on their cell phones. We can get more information out to you guys about how that works. So again, these are all of the tools to mitigate in a community. We, there are really simple rules, which is that if we spend time outside, if we spend time six feet apart, if we wear face coverings, we will be less likely to spread infection. And so this is why infection is spreading in the colder weather states right now, because it is harder to continue to do things outside. The important takeaway from this is the reason that we want individuals to wear their face coverings is because a face covering protects others. It protects people around you from experiencing your droplets. I am producing droplets right now by speaking. They are landing on my computer screen, so they are not infecting anyone. But when we are hanging out with each other and we are talking, talking loudly, laughing, we are creating droplets. Large droplets will, you know, fly across and land on somebody else and potentially make them sick. Smaller droplets can linger in the air and other people can breathe them in, not at the exact same time that you're expelling them. So what we believe about COVID-19 is that it has droplet and aerosolization spread. And so what a mask does is it contains your droplets, keeps them to you, and makes you less likely to spread your infection to someone else. The mask order is an order in the state of Colorado. There are some limited exemptions. There are penalties for businesses and individuals that are not interested in complying with the executive order in the state of Colorado. Here's a fun slide, how to wear your mask. I can't see you guys, I turned you off, so I could see my slides. But I hope someone at least got a chuckle out of it. And no, that's not my dog. My dog's much cuter than that. So then Colorado, so our mitigation strategies, the restrictions that we are in, in the state of Colorado, is divided into stay-at-home, which were the orders we all experienced in March into the end of April. Stay-at-home gave way to Safer at Home. And Safer at Home was designed to be the transition to protect our neighbors. And protect our neighbors was going to be sort of the least restrictive way that we learned to live with this virus while we were working through, the public health community was working through a vaccine and learning how to treat the disease better, so that fewer people got really sick and fewer people died, right? Like in the beginning of this, in March and April, if someone was hospitalized with COVID in Colorado, they had probably a one out of five chance of not making it out of the hospital. If they were in an ICU, they had a 50 to 75% chance of not coming home from the ICU. Those stats have gotten a lot better. So part of the reason why we do the restrictions is to sort of give time for the healthcare community to catch up, to not be overwhelmed, but also to be able to treat people better, shorten their length of stay and send people home healthier and send more people home. So that's part of what we're doing in this, in addition to making sure that we have public health infrastructure to contain disease. So where we are now is, La Plata County is in Safer at Home Level 2. These are the current restrictions for Level 2. These are all available on our website. I don't think that I will go through what these are. If there are questions about them, we can talk about, you know, specifics. But Safer at Home Level 2 is where probably most counties in Colorado are currently. Quite a, a couple have moved to Safer at Home Level 3. Last week, we expect a whole bunch more to move to Safer at Home Level 3 in this upcoming week. And I think, as you can see, Safer at Home Level 3 is one step away from a stay-at-home order. There is nobody in Colorado that wants to go back to where we were in March and April with stay-at-home orders. Unfortunately, the case rate growth that we have right now across the state is not coming under control. It is not plateauing. And the information that we got today from the White House Task Force was that they are, we should be able to see, you know, kind of a plateau and a decrease at, in the, in the colder Upper Midwest and the colder states that are ahead of us in this type of case growth. By six weeks, they should be starting to see plateaus. They are not, which is of high level of concern for the states that are kind of lagging behind in that growth, right? If we're four weeks behind the Dakotas, which is what the characterization of where Colorado's growth is right now, and the Dakotas are six weeks into not being able to plateau their case rate growth, we are all looking at potentially having to take some big steps as communities. And that is not what anybody wants. So if we make adjustments now to our day-to-day activities, we can avoid this. When we do successfully get through Safer at Home, protect our neighbors, like we talked about, was what Colorado envisioned as more of the long-term restrictions. And in order to qualify for the long-term, more minimal restrictions, there are some qualifications that require both meeting specific metrics and then having mitigation and containment letters of commitment from local governments, as well as hospitals, law enforcement, emergency management. So I'm putting this up here now. We are not qualifying for protect our neighbors yet. But if we are able to maintain the control of infection that we have and then bring it down, at some point, we will want to look at protect our neighbors. It will require the city of Durango to commit to the mitigation and containment plan to control disease in our community. And then I think this is my last slide. Another mitigation strategy is flu shots. It is really important that each one of us as individuals have a flu shot. You don't want to be co-infected with COVID-19 and the flu. So part of your flu shot is to protect you as an individual. But the other thing that's really important about your flu shot is that we can have heavy flu years, which require lots of healthcare and have lots of, unfortunately, lots of individuals seeking treatment in hospitals for flu. We do not, while we are worried about increased cases of COVID-19 and we are looking at a peak hospitalization for COVID-19, also want a heavy flu year. So it is also important, not just to protect you as an individual, but it's to protect others around you and to protect the healthcare system. It is important that you get your flu shot. Here are all of the places where you can get flu shot. And we have lists of all of the flu clinics that San Juan Basin Public Health is putting on in addition to our community testing and sometimes in conjunction with our community testing for COVID-19. And that is it. Now I'm going to turn it back on, so I can see you guys.
Thank you, Leanne. Yeah, again, that's Leanne Gilan. It's from Executive Director of San Juan Basin Health Department. Salient points, Leanne, thank you so much for that great overview. And I think for the public to know, we are in a real crux right now of being a small community. So far, we're doing better than, as Leanne stated, better than the rest of Colorado, which is up in the Denver area. There's, they're approaching some hospital capacity issues and having real problems. We don't have those yet. But it's largely because of the good behavior and the high level of compliance in our community with transmission reduction measures. And so in, as we try to pull the levers and open up our community a little bit more and perhaps achieve a Level 1, less restrictive situation, I think it's important to, I think, counsel, we need to talk about some possible additional levels of enforcement that are enforceable by the city specifically, that might help us achieve that, a higher level of transmission reduction than 65%. As we can see from Leanne's graphs, it's the difference between 65, approaching 70, is really incredible in terms of the amount of cases that enter our community. So with that, is there any other questions counsel might have of Leanne while she's on? Chris?
Yeah, a couple of questions. Leanne, thanks so much for the presentation and for your time. I did want to ask, and it may be to you, it may be to Jose, our attorney, whoever wants to field this one. If you could please inform the public what we are doing to try to respond to existing, either public or businesses that are refusing to comply with the government order right now? And what is our, our plan going forward? And does counsel have to act relative to that?
Well, I think I can start a little bit from the city perspective. And chief, I know that we've been getting some concerns and complaints and I know that we've responded to a few of them over the weekend. And if you have a moment to give a quick, brief update on those, I'd appreciate it.
Absolutely. Thank you. So yeah, we had numerous complaints over the weekend, over the last couple of weeks with several businesses. At this point right now, really all we can do is document those concerns and forward them on as far as the health concerns fall into play. However, there are other criminal complaints and concerns that have arisen that include vandalism and other concerns out there that have to deal with just social disorder, public disorder type crimes. And we've made some arrests on those. We've cited some people in the court. And, you know, we continue to document those and move those forward into the judicial system.
Thank you, chief. You're a little, little light there, but we heard you, I think we heard you fine. And it's, it's come to, I might add that we all know that the city of Durango was early mandatory mask ordinance, well, that we passed the mandatory mask ordinance to state of Colorado. And the governor actually passed the mandatory mask ordinance. And, but once the governor did that, we let our, our own city of Durango mask ordinance lapse, because obviously it was superseded by the statewide mask ordinance. And so as we look forward to some of these higher levels of non-compliance, that's again, I think the council, you know, in the coming week or two, should consider concepts where we do have a higher level of enforcement capability by, by city, whether it's PD or with business license folks or whatever mechanisms we have. It's clear that this is not going to go away. And we have had an incredible amount of compliance to date, but we have had some specific problematic areas. So this is something to think about as we move forward. Again, Chris?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up by saying, I agree. And I would ask that the city look into that next step. And I would like to discuss it at our next earliest opportunity relative to whether or not we do put back in a, our own, our own rule that we can enforce, if we're, if we're not able to do something about what's happening in our community, given the compelling data that was just shared with us relative to the health of the community and trying to keep this under control. I would really like to have that conversation. And I have one other question for Leanne, if I can, relative to that. Leanne, can you comment on the speeding, speed of tests? I had to take a test out of the state recently for a meeting and I got my results back in an hour. And then Christina had to take one last week, because she was in, in, in contact with an employee that had And, and then Christina had to take one last week because she was in, 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 in contact with an employee that had tested positive. She still doesn't have her test back. And I was just curious, I know that's, that's a big piece and wondering how that's going.
Yeah, we, San Juan Basin Public Health has stood up community testing through the state lab. And the state lab in Colorado is not able to keep up with the volume of testing due to this most recent increase. So this is a, been an ongoing problem from the beginning of the pandemic, which is as cases rise, the demand exceeds the capacity of the state lab. So with that, we have recently changed our community testing out of the state lab, which is receiving 23,000 tests a day now that we're at such a high rate across the state and can only process 7,000 today. So what's happening is they're getting 23,000 samples in, the lab capacity is 7,000. I think for everyone that's been with me from the beginning, you remember that when we sat here in March, we said this capacity was 160 tests a day, right? So it's, it's a big victory to get from 160 to seven or eight thousand. It is not enough to contain COVID-19 as we go into winter months. So the state of Colorado is looking for send out labs. Our tests were going to the Colorado state lab and then getting sent out if they were lower priority tests. We have now solved that and we are bypassing the state and going with our free testing directly to a send out lab. So those results will come back faster. But what it doesn't do is if anyone was caught in that time period where they were receiving 23,000 a day and only processing 7,000, there's a backlog of negative test results. We've worked really hard to make sure all of the positive results got out. There's another, there were some other cracks in the state system where there were other labs that had broken positives. We built redundancy into all of our local systems. I'm not going to talk about that. But there are people in our community that are still waiting for negative results because they got tested prior to this switch. This is probably way too much information, except to let you know that as we increase volume and increase demand, things continue to break. We expect PPE to break again. We expect specimen collection to break again. We expect, we expect reagents to, you know, run the tests, the PCR tests to break again. So we are trying to build redundancies into every system so that we can send out lab, to labs all over the country from our local community. Now, when you talk about getting results in an hour, that's a point of care, either a point of care PCR or a point of care antigen test. We are also working right now to bring, we have six antigen tests on order from the state of Colorado that if we are able to get those here, we can start getting tests back to people in 15 minutes to an hour. I, I feel, maybe I shouldn't have said this at a public meeting because everything that you have on order with the state as cases are rising. And you have to remember, we're a low priority community because we've been able to contain disease more successfully than other communities. So while we just continue to put in our orders and try to bring more resources here, we're never the first community that's resourced because we've contained disease successfully and because we have 100% case investigations. So I am working as hard as I can to get 15 minute to one hour tests. We are hoping to have news to share on that soon. We are not, that period is not on the end of the sentence yet.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Excellent. Counselor Baxter and then Counselor Nozworthy, thank you.
Thank you, Dean. I just wanted to say that I also think we should have the conversation about what can we do to increase our compliance rates? But the other side of that is how do we enforce? And one of our biggest challenges when we did have the mask order was even then we didn't have clear steps to do enforcement. So I think before we have that conversation, we need to have some steps we can do to actually enforce. So when we pass an ordinance or we make some changes, we have some teeth in it.
Clearly, that's where we found ourselves today, I think. And that's exactly, exactly right for the community to know. Counselor Nozworthy?
Thank you. First of all, Leanne, a huge thanks to you and your team. You've been at this since January when the rest of us weren't even thinking about some disease that might hit us. So I appreciate that. And I know you, you guys are working round the clock to keep us safe. I do believe that what you presented was both compelling, but also extremely sobering. And so you did provide us with options, what we can do to keep our community safe. And again, it's just reinforcing those measures. And like the other two counselors, I too support an effort to look at what we can do to increase compliance and what can we do to enforce any ordinances we have. I think that looking at your graphs makes it look like what we're heading into right now is much worse than any of the other spikes or waves that we've encountered. So I hope the whole community sees the seriousness of this and together we can work to address this and not overload our hospital system. Thank you so much to you and your team.
Thank you.
Counselor Youssef?
Thanks, Mayor Burke. Leanne, thank you so much for your efforts and for the efforts of your team. I have two questions that I'd like to ask you, please. If you could let us know. Number one, you mentioned that there are penalties for businesses that are not complying. Can you let us know what those penalties are? And then number two, can you discuss at what point do we move to a stricter level of, of, you know, safer at home? And, and, and when, what, what is the trigger for that?
I'm going to start with that one and then I'll go back to the compliance. So we are safer level three, which is the one step away from a stay at home order is when you have 175 cases per 100,000 residents over 14 day period. So when your case rate is 175 per 100,000 residents over 14 day period. As of today, La Plata County just hit our absolute highest number. We're at 164 cases per 100,000 residents for 14 days. So when you hit 175, you then, there, there's a process of consulting with the state health department about how the community is going to move into the next stage of mitigation. There are not significant differences between level one and level two. There are significant differences between level two and level three in the capacity of businesses, you know, how many people are allowed to be in restaurants, how many people are allowed to be in retail establishments? How many people are allowed to worship together, that sort of thing? So we, we are not at 175, we are not looking at this stay at home level three restrictions yet. But we also have to be honest that it is a real possibility. We are seeing every populous county in the state headed into level three. And I, I do want to say, you know, I, I want to like really sort of balance the, here's where it's headed. And we are at an inflection point where we can do things as a community to avoid landing in the same places as everybody else, right? We are the only community across the state that has successfully had a college open. We successfully have K through 12. Most, half of Coloradoan kids do not have an in-person learning option right now. We had incredibly high occupancy rates through the fall in our lodging. We had high sales tax returns. We have an airport that's operating at twice the national average, right, right? So we have done this before. We have been as a community in a very tenuous position and we have hunkered down on our, you know, we're double down on our mitigation strategies and we have, we, we've been successful. So if we do nothing, we will be looking at safer at home level three very, very soon in the next couple of weeks. If we take this opportunity right now to say, let's change our behavior as a community. And this is why we had this press conference on Friday and this is why we wanted it to be, you know, about the schools, right? We, we, I mean, you can't keep your economy working if no one has in-person learning. But schools are also not just, obviously not economic drivers. They're all owe our, you know, we owe our children education, social, emotional learning, academic learning, you know, physical, the, the physical care that we provide for them in schools, all of that. So this is, this is the point that we're at. But we're at 164 right now. 175 is when you have to start looking at your next action steps. The other question I think you had was around penalties for businesses. So the executive order, it's the mask order, the amended executive order, what EO 2020 138, the business penalty it talks about is business license or liquor license. Those are the two things that are described in the executive order as the enforcement path forward as laid out in the executive order.
Thank you. I just want to, I appreciate that, all that clarification. And I just want to say that I think that one of the things that we've been successful at as a community is working together with the city and the county and San Juan Basin Public Health. It is definitely the most powerful way to move forward. And I hope that we can continue to do that as we look at further levels of enforcement and/or discuss that together in the coming weeks if needed.
Thank you. Thank you. And Counselor Baxter, you have another comment?
Yes. And I also want to say thank you, Leanne. You guys have been very communicative and I really appreciate that. The, the question that Counselor Youssef asked about business licenses or enforcement, how do, how do we make that happen? At the city level, we decide that we want to do some enforcement. Who do we have to go to? Who does the enforcement? How do we make that happen?
So is that question directed at me or is that directed to your staffing?
I'm sorry, it was directed to you because right now we don't have, I, I believe right now the enforcement capability is at the county and state level and not at the city level?
It's, it's shared, it's shared across governments and the executive order lists business licenses and liquor licenses as a pathway forward. So it is a shared responsibility. That is what's listed in the executive order. We recognize that it will take collaborative action as a community to succeed in enforcement. We also recognize that enforcement of face covering orders will be an important part of containing disease. So we are ready and available to work collaboratively to come up with what the enforcement pathways. But it is a whole of government response in the same way. And we, we've been really working on, you know, sort of the reason we started with the firefighter analogy is that our staff right now is putting water on the fire and building the fire line. We want to work with the whole of government and the whole of community. It's no different than in the 416 fire when the city of Durango said, we stand ready to close our trails right now because we can't afford to have any more, you know, wildfire in this community, right? And so it's the same type of whole of government next step. And we can work out what that would look like.
So I guess what I, maybe I didn't make myself clear, probably. What I'm asking is what's the process? If, if, if a business is, or any entity is, is not obeying the mask orders or the mitigation efforts, what is the process to do enforcement that could remove a business license? Or how do we make that happen? What are the steps to make that happen? And who does it?
We do not issue business licenses. San Juan Basin Public Health does not. So I, I, I would not, I, I don't have the steps as to how that would happen.
Okay, maybe Chief Brammer could help with that question?
I was going to say, I think when we kind of look at that portion, we kind of work in consultation with the, the city attorney and, and where the interpretation of what he believes, the, the enforcement avenues that we have, I think kind of looking at on this portion is if the city would like to have the enforcement, which it seems that they will, which it seems that I'm hearing from the council members that they would like, that we need to go to the route of creating our, let me try that one more time. Creating our own ordinance or redoing our ordinance that we had lapse and look at placing some key enforcement mechanisms within there to, to make that happen. But I'll pass it on for Dirk to, to have any other items that he may want to place into that comment.
Yeah, just to be clear, the prior mask order was, was not really an ordinance. It was an order that was issued under the emergency authority. So we're looking at business licenses, our business license provisions are primarily administrative to assure that they collect sales tax and that sort of thing. So, you know, if we're going to start enforcing revocation of business licenses, then it very well may be that we need to make some amendments to our ordinances in that regard, clarify a path forward. There's two process requirements. We'll have to have hearings. And it, it won't be a quick path, but I, I'm hearing what you said as well as what Jose said. So I think Steph, we can collaborate and bring some suggestions back to you as soon as possible to move forward in a way that allows us to take some action.
Thank you, Dirk. Yeah, I think, I think this is not going to go away. This is going to be a long haul. And we, I'm looking forward to the day when we can separate the politics from the medical aspects of this transmission of COVID, which will perhaps be tomorrow, who knows, after the election, you know, at least get less noise and signage and so forth to go, goes with it. So then we, then we really have to buckle down and, and acknowledge that we do have some, some non-compliance in our community that we need to effectively be able to deal with moving forward. So I think that's totally appropriate. And I think looking forward to that conversation. This has been expressed by, I believe, all of us unanimously now. And so we don't want to, this is not meant to be an additional burden on the, on the PD. They've got enough things on their plate. You know, I think a simple administrative action of some sort is the best and appropriate hammer that the city of Durango might have to, to deal with non-compliant businesses. So thanks, thanks so much, Leanne. Thank, thank you again. Leanne's our own, very own Dr. Fauci in Durango, Colorado. I've had the, I don't, it's an honor, but it's the benefit of having a bit of an overview, working with the governor's COVID committee. We are so lucky to have San Juan Basin Health Department. I mean, you go from processing sewer and water permits to having to deal with a pandemic in your community. And they've really, really, you, you can imagine in your own business model, trying to deal with something as impactful and be the point person for both the dissemination of information, understanding what's going on and issue these, all these ordinances throughout your community and follow up with contact tracing and so forth. It's, it's an incredible job that, that all of their staff is doing out there right now. So thanks so much. And I guess we better have to move on, but this is probably the most important part of, one of the most important segments of a meeting we've had since, since April. So thank you. And we look forward to helping ask about getting increasing our transmission reduction above 65%, I guess is the goal, simply enough. But let's just stay healthy, everybody. It's easy. It's, I said, the other day, it's, it's, it's not rocket science. It's just simple science. Just let's, just good behavior is all it takes. And Barbara Nozworthy? Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. You know, I, I visited a couple of places this summer where they really had a culture, an expectation of compliance. And there were things I saw like, these are the six, the five steps you could do to help us contain COVID. And they were plastered up in, in public spaces and, you know, on different billboards and things. And I was wondering, in addition to enforcement, what measures we should think about that we can take to really strengthen that culture, cultural expectation that people will help protect one another? I'd like to look at a, some positive sides in addition to any enforcement.
I agree. And yeah, what, you know, I don't know that we can have that discussion right now, but you know, we talked about that a little bit in our, in our meeting with the community with the CDC, the other, CRC the other day. And that's, I'm anxious to implement a few of the graphics and just a culture building around that, around the, because as we said before, it's not going away soon. So we need to make some investment to make sure we don't all have COVID fatigue. And this is, remains top of mind and, and in our community because we, we have done a really good job. And, but at this point, we're, we're far in excess of what our neighbors to the, to the east, Archuleta County is doing. Has had a much better or less incidence rate, but, but they don't entertain the, the tourists and the amount of out of town visitors that we have that sustain our economy. So if we're going to have the economy, we have to do some good behavior and implement some strategy and a culture, as Barbara said. So let's look forward to doing that. And with that, I think we'll let Leanne get some sleep and
Thank you. We appreciate all of you. Thank you so much for all of the work that the city of Durango has done, each and every one of you. The support and the work that everyone that lives in Durango and our surrounding communities has done to keep each other safe. We have every ingredient to be successful and I'm looking forward to getting through this with all of you. Thank you.